You have no one participating electronically. Missy, can you do the roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase?
Here.
Ms. Buckman?
Here.
Ms. Guy?
Here.
Ms. Halsted?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Ms. Sigmund?
Here.
Ms. Solomon?
Here.
And Dr. Warner?
Here.
And I'm sure you have a quorum.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the adjustment.
Second.
Perfect. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Okay. Going on to our discussion of FY24 budget and direction to the superintendent. I hope everybody read their Friday memo as well. Go ahead.
Got a handful of items just to talk about very briefly, just as a quick refresher. We'll hit the non-discretionary expenditures, the discretionary expenditures, some of the high priority items that we did include in the original proposal, and then an update on our state revenue outlook.
So we've kind of beat this to death a little bit, but on our non-discretionary needs, so we just talked about that last week, so not going to go through each one of these line by line, but these are kind of our keep the lights on, our items.
So here's another one that I had added to our Friday bulletin, and in discussions with the board and discussions with staff, there is a definite hiring challenge to getting psychologists in the number that we're looking for to staff, one to 1,000. We do think that there is a higher probability of staffing social workers, and we would recommend a swap in the staffing standards for 25 for the social workers, for the psychs staffing standards in FY24, so basically flip the two in the staffing standards. The net difference is two FTEs more, but it's only a dollar figure difference of about $10,000 because of the cost of psychs compared to social workers. So it's not huge in terms of dollar figure amount, but it is a couple more in terms of headcount.
So my question is, we upped the number of psychologists because we got rid of diagnostics. We reduced diagnosticians by half. So my question is, will social workers be able to perform the tasks that were being done by diagnosticians, or is it a different thing? And how would we, what will that mean for?
So the state standard right now is three to 1,000 for these types of support positions, whether they be mental health workers, whether they be psychologists, diagnosticians, social workers, what have you. And our staffing standards are a little bit different. Here's the thing, you need all of them. You need the psychologists, you need the social workers, you need the diagnosticians, you need other additional supports, but it's kind of like you just can't do it all at one time. You have to parse it out, and this recommendation comes from not a need per se that one group is more overworked than the other. That's not the case. They're all plenty overworked. But rather, what, where is the highest probability of us being able to fill the positions? And so in this case, you know, we do still have some diagnosticians on staff, so it's almost like this is where we could do the most good soonest, and that's the disposition of this recommendation.
Got it. Ms. Healy? The social workers were writing to us about going to court and doing things that they had not done prior to cutting the positions in central office. So are these two positions going to help alleviate that, or how will these impact what the social workers are writing to us about their concerns about the increase in their workload?
So it's not just two positions. It's a net difference in your staffing standards. It's more like 10 positions, so yes, it would alleviate some of that burden.
So they won't have to go to court now? Are you going to have?
No, they would still have that responsibility because that is a part of their work assignment, but it will be reduced because the volume of court visits will be augmented by the staffing that's there.
But in one of the-
Is their caseload will be smaller, is that basically?
Correct.
In one of the responses to the social workers, you said that this is coming, it's going to be FY25, but I thought you said, but this isn't going to impact you anyway because you're already below the standard. It was somebody that was at a school with 900 or something.
Right.
You're already at that standard. So someone like that in an elementary school, which are all going to be below 1,000, that, is this going to have any impact at all in these elementary schools?
It will to a certain degree because, again, the centralized support that we do have will be refocused in other areas, so smaller schools with a lower ratio would see a little bit more support than what they had before, but no, the central core functions of their responsibilities would remain the same.
Okay. So let me just go around and see if you have any questions regarding this. No? Liza?
No, I just think that I'd rather switch, I'd rather reverse them just because it's more viable. We have 13 vacancies for psychologists. We're not going to fill those anytime soon, and I think the social workers do alleviate burden because they have overlap functions in several other positions.
They do, and they also do provide some mental health supports.
Right.
And this will free them up to do a little bit more than that, and the heaviest impact that this would have would be at the high school level. It would virtually double the social workforce at the high school level. So instead, presently right now, every high school has one social worker, and based on the size of our high schools, they would have two. So it really would have a dramatic impact on our high schools.
So you have a net addition of two FTEs. Can you tell us how many FTEs you're looking to hire total?
I believe it's seven.
Social workers.
Currently? Because I think this is an addition of 12 social workers, 10 psychs coming off.
Yes. Yeah. Total of 12.
12, okay.
But 10 psychs would come off.
Right. Okay.
Can I just follow up?
Yes.
The, I would imagine the requirement to go to court impacts more at the higher grade levels than the lower grade levels.
It does.
Correct.
It does.
So for some psych, some social workers, it was something they hadn't had to do previously, but now they do.
Correct.
Okay. That's what I heard.
But that is not an irregular, that is not an irregular assignment for social workers.
Could we get that data about when they go? Because I know there's going to be more truancy by this, because the high school is not going to school, but by the same token, there's families that don't, you know, send the kids to school. So it would be good to know, you know, how many times they have to go and where they are. I know we can't put a time on it because it could be an hour, it could be $500, $600.
Actually, we do have that data, so I'm more than happy to share it. It's not a majority of the time.
Okay. Oh, yes. Oh, sorry.
I'm sure that it is elementary. I'm not saying that. I just think that the occurrences are more rare, and that's all I, just in my experience.
Maraki?
What do FTEs stand for?
Full-time employees.
Full-time equivalent.
Okay. And then what's, in terms of like what they do, what would be the difference between a psychologist and a social worker?
So psychologist has a number of different functions, but their core functions are they're involved in the IEP process and doing some educational testing and evaluation of students, and also providing some direct mental health support for some students. A social worker, very similarly, in some regard, is going to be involved in the IEP process, doing a social history. They're also going to follow up, connecting families with some services if they need additional services. They too may also be providing direct services to students in terms of mental health support as well.
Okay. And what is IEP?
Yep.
Instituteal Educational Plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
It is a plan that our students with disabilities have so that they can receive services so that they can perform up to expectations.
And actually, it's set in the law. Is it not the IEP? Yes. And there's a whole team that gets together. We probably should get some information for our students about that, the whole process, because it involves, what, 13% of their population?
It's quite involved, and it does involve 13% of the students. It's not the same, like a 504 might be an accommodation or-
But see, 504, they need to know what that is too.
Yeah, so there's all sorts of special acronyms that found you when you hear them.
Okay. Section 504, the reorganization acronym. Dr. Chase? Before you take a bite?
No, good.
Okay. Ms. Sigmund?
Do we have any schools currently right now that have two social workers that might be losing them?
No. Not two. There are some elementary schools that do have a full-time social worker, so that would still stay the same.
Okay. Okay. I was trying to remember that I felt like some of our Title I schools might get more than one, and then-
They may have a title staff that's assigned as a social worker. That wouldn't change. That's based on title, it's a title assignment.
That's, I think, what I was trying to make sure.
Ms. Guy?
It's almost, that's separate from the staffing standard.
I don't think I have any questions.
Okay.
It's a great question. Definitely Jermaine.
So my concern is access to mental health services, counseling, otherwise without, I get that we can't fill the positions, but we also don't have a very robust network outside of our schools to grab a hand and attach it.
That's why we can't fill ours.
That's right. So I have a concern if we don't have a plan in place, if we don't, if we really can't because people aren't there, but I need to know the conversations are being had with whomever. I'll have them if you want, but to fill those gaps because we can't ignore the mental health struggle, and we need to be able to make sure that we're filling. This is not a hole that I want to make if I can't also know that I can't plug it in. So I get that we can't plug it in anyway because we can't find the people, and how do you get the people to hold the position and why you hold the position? So totally on, I'm totally on the spin cycle on that one, but I have concerns reducing our capability to bring folks in if we can't also-
So here's the good news, you're not reducing anything.
We're talking about social worker.
You're delaying your additions, if that makes sense.
You just said we were going to take away seven positions.
No, what you had, what you had planned for next year, swap that out for what you had planned for two years from now.
But also, to be fair, Ron, but psychologists can also help find outside resources for families, so that if counseling is-
Psychologists or social workers.
Social workers.
Social workers, right, right.
So if it's a, so if it's therapy, social workers, because they have more wraparound, can help find resources outside of school.
And here's-
I'm concerned because of the waiting area.
Well, all right.
So how many psychologists are currently, look how many open positions remain?
You have 13 vacancies right now, so-
For psychologists.
And here's, and here's, let's back up a little bit because I think that Catherine and-
So we'll still have 13 vacancies.
You'll still have 13 vacancies until we fill them. But Catherine and Maraki brought up really good questions about the job description, and their primary responsibility is not ongoing therapy.
Right, right, right.
It's a lot of mental health first aid, and it's a lot of educational testing evaluation, and a lot of those functions, so the outside therapy and the outside mental health support is still going to have to be an outside thing and not necessarily a part of our day-to-day responsibilities with a set of students. Don't get me wrong, our psychologists, the ones that we have, the handful that we have, are amazing, and they do a lot with very limited resources, but their primary responsibilities are not the ongoing treatment of children.
I think it's important to know that school psychologist is a specific area of psychology that is primarily involved in testing and measurement.
Well, no, I get that, but I also-
And our counselors, most of our counselors in the schools have a master's degree in psychology, and their education is more into counseling and therapy type stuff, so school psychologists actually don't do a whole lot of that kind of stuff.
No, but are they not our, because you just said the mental health first aid piece. So for me, it's queuing on the crisis, and I didn't mean to intonate theirs.
So you've got a handful. Now, you're on the right track, and let me tell you why, because you've got a handful of professionals that definitely have some mental health first aid training. Good news, social workers are also in that group. Psychologists are a part of that group, and our school counselors are actually the largest part of that group, and that's actually the personnel that is going to triage with a student most likely first. And you're probably in some tier three type of scenario if you're going to be having any kind of regularity with meetings with a psychologist or a social worker in the school setting.
How exactly are psychologists concentrated throughout, like, different grade levels? So like elementary, middle, high school, how are they?
So that's a great question. Currently, right now, we have one staffed at each of our secondary schools, so there's one at each high school and each middle school, and we have them split-staffed at elementary schools.
Do we have a specific one for Phoenix Center, or is it shared?
I think that one's shared.
I know, because the population is small.
So I have-
Yeah, they don't have to.
Ms. Healy has a question, please? In the past, I recall that we have contracted four psychologists with different organizations.
We are doing that currently, and we're still-
I mean, is that not an option for to fill some of these?
Oh, no, we're going to continue to have to do that 100% because, again, part of the functions that need to be performed are legal requirements as part of the IEP process, so whether we can do the workload ourselves or not, we still have to do the work that we're compelled to do through that requirement. So we will have to continue to do some outside contracting until either our salaries reach a price point, or there's a surplus of labor in the market that is willing to take our price point for these positions. So this brings up another set of items for the board to discuss about differentiated compensation, because that is also directly connected to this item as well. So if that's this one, we'll move on to the stuff that we've already talked an awful lot about, which hopefully will go quickly.
So just rehashing some of our discretionary expenditures, which are all compensation. So this is just our teacher scale comparison, and I, we're going to just request added our Spotsy's current FY23 scale, so you can see where they were at, where they're proposed, and then also our current scale, our proposed scale, and Prince William's scale. Otherwise, this isn't new information, so there's not any questions.
Well, it's noteworthy if you want to point out the Spotsy stuff is more relevant than I probably want it to be, and that it's, if you do nothing-
We're in trouble.
You're not just in trouble, you are losing the war, not just losing the battle.
I don't think any of us have any objection to the change in the teacher's scale. I think that's staying in the budget regardless, so.
I'm comfortable with that, yeah.
All right. So when we talk about our other non-teacher things, just looking back at how context matters, so in Plaidton 1 and 22, you're looking at a combined, you know, over 13 to close to 14%, and also, we've added students. So looking at our employees, no changes since the superintendent's proposed budget as of right now, so our surface employees are looking at an average of 7.7%. Our license at an average of eight and a half. Administrators are on, you know, a pay band, so it's a flat seven. And then hourly, our really more applicable are the supplements and stipends that are applied to our teacher's scale, and those went up 3%.
I mean, you have, I know previously Ms. Healy asked for more information on the 40%, do you have that?
Frequency distribution.
Yeah, I sent that out about a week and a half ago, but I've got, I've got the breakdown. Actually, I don't have a hard copy for you, but if I can just, can I speak to it?
Yeah, speak to it, and then what can we look at? Well, I'm concerned about the optics, because if it's just one position that's out of whack, that's one thing, but when I look at 5% to 40%, that tells me there's going to be some in the 40% range, and like I said, if it's just one, that might be one thing depending on the circumstances. But if I were looking at that as a member of the community, I'd say, wow, that's a pretty big raise.
You could say, hey, had depressed snare scales for our surface employees for 10 days.
Honestly, that's exactly how I saw it. What I saw was shame on us for letting that person suffer at being less than 40% of what respect is. That's what I thought. I didn't think, wow, they're going crazy with the money. I thought, wow, we really screwed people on that one.
Well, see, and my thing is, when did this person come to work for us? Is this something that's taken place over the years, or is this somebody we just hired, in which case they accepted the position at that rate? So I'm looking at, you know, a lot of facts here, but as a taxpayer and as a representative of taxpayers, you know, I want to know, you know, how many of these, you know, employees are in that 40% or even the 30% or more range? So do you have that information?
Yeah.
I missed that email, so maybe you could send it again.
Yeah, we can, I can send it again. So of our 4,300 total employees, there's 21 that are getting above 25%. So a very small number of the entire scope. We have 21 that are in the 20 to 24.9%.
Wait, go ahead, say this quicker.
So 25% and above is 21 total employees, assuming they're all still here next year.
And that's all based on years of service?
Yes, yes, ma'am. We have between 20 and 25% are 21 employees. 15 to 20% is 49. 10 to 15 is 137, and then 5 to 10 is 1,617.
So 1,000?
1,617.
And that's just service employees?
Correct.
Or is that all employees?
Correct.
Service.
Maybe you can send us those numbers.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Service employees such as like janitors.
Not licensed.
No, editor of service.
Oh, they're a separate kind. Yeah, it could be paras, anybody.
Paraprofessional.
Somebody in the offices.
Yeah, clerical staff.
And this does include all funds, so it includes our school nutrition personnel, our fleet services.
Yeah, I was going to ask, was it fleet services as well?
Does anyone have any questions on this?
So that's about 0.12%.
I've got a question about the stipends.
0.012%.
You know, every year-
0.1%.
0.1%.
We get questions about stipends, you know, some places that we're not giving stipends that people, you know, probably should be getting stipends, other ones, the differences. I think we had a public speaker the other day, but that's not the first time I've heard, you know, why do some sports get so much more than others, and, you know, how is it done? And we've, Chris, you've been around, Dr. Taylor hasn't, for these discussions, but there's been periodic discussions of overhauling that whole stipend system because it seems like we've just added on without going back and studying them.
And thought about putting on a budget committee.
Was there any work done to that effect, you know, for this one, or was it just a flat 3%?
Year three of your five-year budget. So no, not in this year's budget at all. The only thing that we did was a flat 3%. I think we tweaked maybe a handful of stipends. We added a couple of lead stipends for librarians, which didn't have anything, and some elementary school stipends for activities because they had very little. But the overhaul, we recognize we can't do it all in one year. We put it in the third year of the five-year sketch.
To look at it.
To revamp it all together, because you're due for-
See, my question would be, why would we wait three years when we know we have a problem? So I know you couldn't do it this year, this is the first, but why would you not do it?
After, I've heard a lot about that too, and I wanted to put it on, I was actually thinking about putting it on the next budget committee to look at and get the kind of view-
Well, that could also go to the Citizens Budget Committee, maybe for review.
Yeah, it could go to your Citizens Budget Advisory Committee, but it's not happenstance why it's in year three either, because over the next several years, your cost of adjustment to the license scale will stop to be as dramatic as it is right now. Your first three years of your license scale adjustment have been significantly dramatic to the tens of millions, so that will start to level off and become a lot more of a predictable number in year three, and it does give you a little bit of room for you to make adjustments to other budget priorities. Trying to line this up with a rebenchmarking year is also another advantage because historically we've seen a little bit of an uptick in revenue in rebenchmarking years, and in the first year of a biennial budget, that does make a lot of sense, so there you go.
Yeah, I don't think it's too early to start looking at that if we have time, because it's not going to be easy. It's something that's been an issue, a matter of interest for a long, long time, and I do think there's some inequities in the stipends.
It would have been about three years ago, we had some lengthy budget discussions about it, and then just because of budget cuts and why we got to the end, and basically none of the changes actually got implemented.
Right. But even like some of the CTE teachers that are, you know, they have to stay and prep their kids to go and, you know, to making sure that they have something in that stipend area as well would be helpful. I do think we could go ahead and at least, I know we can't execute, but we should at least start having the conversations because I think it's going to take a minute to do. And I don't think we should jump in year three to start-
Between Fab and the Citizens Budget Committee, they could start laying the groundwork maybe for us to make the decision.
Considerations, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, we at Fab can look at how it's being done and where we are, and then the citizens can help us figure out what we're missing.
I can assure you that we need to work on it.
Oh, yeah. I'm aware.
Oh, but it's nice to have a starting point, and I think that would help us get there.
But I know teachers who do this stuff and don't get stipends, and they hear, oh, we're working on trying to get stipends, and they're like, uh-huh. I mean, they know, it's just-
Which is why I'm grateful to hear that there's a slight increase in elementary, especially like-
I think we got big, big problems with just salaries.
As I talked about, it's 7:30 on Tuesday, Thursday.
Okay, um, Ms. Halsted?
So when we're looking at all of these or whatever, this kind of maybe relates back to the other one, I just want to make sure like I'm on track and with the right, like on this way, so, and I'm just looking at, sorry, I'm at that stage where I can't see everything anymore. I have to take a picture of it and enlarge it on my own.
Poor baby.
I know, it's all right.
Ms. Healy's in the same-
I was going to say, and it's actually, and I'm actually in my prescription glasses, so I apologize for that, but as I'm looking through this and stuff, okay, we're looking at swapping out the psychologists with the social workers and all that stuff, so now we have a lot of more, and I know we did this, the ESOL teachers, because the increase in what we're doing, but I, God, I don't even know how to, like, I don't even know, I feel like I don't know how to frame this, because in my head, I think I've, I feel like I've twisted it around, like, there's a good deal of money in those that we're holding off on putting somewhere else, right, because we've reserved it now for these 9.8 full-time ESOL teachers. But what's the probability we're going to be able to hire them in the upcoming year as well?
We did last year.
You hired them?
We did.
That is not what, this is not what this says though, right? Because this says proposed, right? For the upcoming year.
So we can, we can switch to some other topic? We're no longer talking stipends, is that right?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I just-
Can we finish this short? Yeah. Okay.
Can I just make a quick statement?
I just want to make sure I'm looking, like, because I'm, I'm sorry, I'm looking at it one way, and I just want to make sure I'm reading it in the right manner, right?
All right, let's finish this, and then we'll go to that.
Okay.
Okay, so are there any questions on who'd take care of our children? No, Chris is going to send us that email. And Chris is going to send us that email again. Okay.
And then next, we wanted to take a look at the things that-
I think this dovetails with what you were asking.
Yes, it may, yes.
The high priority items that didn't make it into Dr. Taylor's final presentation, final budget, which is the differentiated compensation for the hard-to-staff, additional enhancements to the parascale, the additional implementation of the Phase 1 standards that some of those had to get pushed off to FY25, the PEGO maintenance, which we discussed in great detail, and then also our differentiated school site allocations.
Can I just make a-
Hang on a second, and let's go through everybody again so that we can, because people at home need to be able to hear too.
And just, each of these slides subsequent to here is just detailing each one of these, so they're not new slides, and I, if we have specific topics about, or questions about the individual one, then I'll jump to that.
Okay. So these are the high priorities that are not included in the budget. These is the last if we wanted to put them into the budget. This is, this is an area, or this is a slide that we need to discuss and decide, is any of this warranting our want to add back into the budget? I would say in the discussions I've had with a few, yes, there are some. So let's go around the room, and if you have a question, and then if you have a priority to have it added back into the budget, let's say so, so that we're given direction to Dr. Taylor.
I don't want to subtract anything.[1714.83] Um, I don't wanna subtract anything. You said it would be sixteen million dollars just to do what we did last year. For the last, I don't know, three years that I've been on the board, what we've asked for and what we've needed have not been what we've gotten. So we're always just barely keeping the lights on. There are things that I think we need to add, the differentiated compensation for hard-to-staff positions, maybe paring it down to just math, special ed and psychologists. Additional enhancements, I'd like to fix the paraprofessional scale, because it's kind of a disaster. And the Pago, because we didn't really have additional, the funds that we needed. Those are, and, and because the psychologists, I agree with Ms. Halsted, we need them. So, but I think we can target it, but I don't wanna ask for less. We have, Spotsylvania is, is chasing us with salary. They're asking for twenty-three million dollars in their budget, and right now, we're asking for sixteen million, and it's not enough. It's not enough for what we need. I think we have no idea what the, the county's gonna decide. We should just ask for what we need, and then, and then we'll, we'll, we'll sort through it later. That's my opinion.
Okay, Dr. Chase?
Yeah, I mean, I, you all heard me go on about math instructional, so I definitely want, if not all of this differentiated compensation, certainly some of it. Am I correct, the psychologist number would go down since we aren't hiring as many this year, right? So that number is gonna be slightly smaller than, than what it currently is listed as being. So that's an important one. Uh, paraprofessionals, I would say something that, that I would love for us to be able to do something about. And then Pago, we have like no money this year for that, and that's kind of a scary place to be. It's a great place to be in terms of less salary lapse means you're successfully filling positions with qualified people, which is great, that's what we need to be doing, but we gotta come up with another way to pay for three R projects. So that's kinda where I'm at.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Igman?
I can't get over that we discussed on Tuesday that we are withholding funds from schools that they use for classroom activities and field trips to limp over our finish line.
But it's just a temporary hold though, right?
It is, but like the fact that we have to do it and say it on a public meeting. Like, I get that my kid is not going to Jamestown or whatever, but, and that was never in the plan, and that is just there, but like, the fact that we had to make that phone call or send that email is disgusting.
Well, and the reason we had to do it is because the fuel costs went up, and because the contract for the custodian went up.
Yeah, but like, if that's the last money we have to play with, that's really what it comes down to.
That's what it comes down to.
Because if it was, if there were any other pots to pull from, that's where we would've pulled it from. But sitting there and hearing, wow, we're asking them to kinda hold off on field trips that we finally have a window for.
Yeah.
That we can't send them on, because we might have to fix a boiler, or pay for something to keep our schools open, to keep them in school in the first place. I mean, the more I think about it, it's just, it's just sad.
No, we need more parents to know that.
Yeah, like, and it, like, it hit me then, I was like, did he just say that? I'm not gonna speak on it now, because I need to think about that, like, that really needs to sink in. Like, and I, you know, I am very conservative with the budget, like, I agree that maybe we don't do the full three-point-eight, maybe there's somewhere in, like, the two range, or whatever, we can map that down, but, like, I wanted Pago.
So you would like some differentiated compensation?
I would. Um, I was, you know, I was for Pago last year, but I also know that they're supposed to be able to bail us out, but, but then I hear that we're not, we're putting a hold on field trips, so that we might be able to fix stuff. And the same thing with school site allocations, if our schools are gonna be overcrowded, and we're going to be essentially funding more classrooms in form of trailers, I feel like school site allocations is even more important this year than it was last year.
All right.
And, you know, I'm all about like, whatever we can do to fix our salaries, that's like echoing what everybody else is saying, but the reasons why on these other things are hard, are hard-hitting.
Ms. Guy?
I would like to add one, two, three, four, and five to the budget.
Okay, I hear you.
We're gonna cut whatever we give anyways, I'd rather, I'd rather ask for more and have them cut and come away with more, than to go skinny and then come back initiated.
Okay.
Okay, so I would be chubby.
Ms. Halsted?
Well, so I can, this is where I kinda feel like, this is what I'm looking at, like, I'm over here trying to figure out like, all right, do we really need that many teachers? Should be, and you're right, like, I don't, I don't mean it that way. I meant like with ESOL, I'm like, could we get a dollar there? Like, I'm in my couch looking for pennies and nickels right now, right? Like, trying to figure out how, how could I get, yeah.
Well, I've got all these little, little questions about little dollars, but.
And then I'm like, did you think about maybe not getting those extra Band-Aids or EpiPens next year? Can we save twenty dollars there? Like, that's literally like, I'm going through this line by line by line, wondering. But I, but you're right, like, there's, why are, why am I looking at this? Like, I guess I am looking at this, because I don't want, I, I feel like the taxpayers are gonna face this big burden again and wonder what the heck is going on. And there's so many other things outside the school system that are running away I don't understand, that I wish we could fix so that we could support the schools more robustly. That not happening anytime soon, I fear. I'm one hundred percent behind the paraprofessional scale, just because I think as a, it supports us for our teachers alone, just to take some of the additional burden off their plates. But, but that's a, for some folks, I mean. That's a lot of work for very little money. Um, and for me, I feel like, we're already asking for all this money, one-point-five seems almost stupid not to just, you know what I mean? It's like, four and whatever million dollars, like.
Throw it in there. Because the reality is, we're gonna have to go through this again once we know what the number is.
Yeah, yeah.
So right now we're asking, but, but this budget is the culmination of years and years of neglect.
I just wanna know.
Yeah, a hundred percent. And, and now I'm, like, I kinda feel too, like, we, the, the citizens of this county have the right to assume that at this point in their lives, in, in the amount of time, effort, and energy they've invested in this county, that their schools are gonna be fully funded, with no, nothing taken off of it, particularly when you're looking at a high priority. Like, there's hard-to-staff positions, like, I'm sorry, a hundred and eighty-five math vacancies?
No, 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 that's the number that we.
With the fifteen.
No, I know, but, but right, well, right, but, but what I'm saying is, is that, what do we actually have to offer our fam, these people to come?
Nothing, nothing right now, they don't know right yet.
And to teach, really, what makes us better?
We do have a signing bonus, yeah.
Right?
No.
We're.
We don't have a signing bonus, did, when did that go away?
We do.
We, but it's, it's. Expires after the second year.
So it's what, ten-point-eight million dollars?
Right, but, but she said, what are we doing to get them to come?
No, but why did you say it was just thrown in?
Yeah, I'm not saying, but I, you know, let's put all the facts out here, let's not just.
And stay.
And, and, you know, in the effort of transparency, I think we owe it to the app, to the taxpayers to ask for what we need, take what we get, and then be good stewards with those resources, like. But if we don't tell them what we need, they can't, they can't even tell us no.
I'm, but I'm also saying, I didn't mean to say that our vacancies are one-point-five, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
What I meant to say is, look at what our actual, like, what we need to support this school system. Like, these are huge numbers because of our growth and because of where we're headed and going. And I think at this point, we need to be more proactive in our approach to everything, which is bringing the resources here, looking at them. And, and for me, that, it's a no-brainer on math, because it's just, I mean, if you can't count coming out of school, then we're in big trouble.
How many other divisions in Virginia have over thirty thousand students?
Uh, we're the eighth largest, um, but there are two others right below us that are at the thirty thousand.
Well, let's, let's remember that, that the county to the south of us is asking for the amount that they are, and they have thirty percent fewer students than we do. Okay, so let's.
Yeah, higher per pupil.
Right, they are already higher per pupil, we are.
So are you comfortable with any of the priorities in partic, oh, it's not, any of the priorities in particular?
The high priorities? I, I mean, I personally would like to see them all back in.
Okay.
That's good.
That's what I'm looking at.
There you go.
There's nothing.
Ms. Healy?
Okay, I'm gonna be the minority here.
She always is when it comes to the budget, but.
Well, I'm, I'm ver, I am very fiscally conservative. Having said that, I'm for the differentiated compensation, particularly for the math and the special ed.
Okay.
I think math, we have failed our students for a long time, and part of that is because we are not able to attract and retain the teachers, so. And on the same vein, special ed, we're required by law to provide this education, and we can't provide it if we don't have the teachers. So I see that as really a non-negotiable. The other ones, I, yeah, I don't, I don't know, if, if we have zero vacancies, I'm not sure I can fiscally support a, um, incentive or differential when we are not having, at least today, you know, a, an issue to attract people for these positions.
If we're already increasing the pay scale too, so.
Yes.
Yeah, so, so the other, and the psychologists, I don't think that if we give a five-thousand-dollar bonus, it's not gonna attract a psychologist. I mean, we don't have psychologists because there is a huge discrepancy between our pay scale and what they're probably able to get in the public sector. So we, I think we're gonna be needing to look at other ways to attract psychologists. But, um, so I'm, I, I don't, I, I don't see that as making much of a difference. I mean, the other ones, would, would it be nice? Of course it would be nice, but I, I'm, I'm looking at more the necessities, so.
Okay.
No, I would on that one. The paras, um, I, I would support that, but I'm not, I'm not sure I would define this as enhancements. This is really bringing them up to where they should be. An enhancement to me gives a picture of, we're going to make this, we're gonna enhance, we're gonna make it better. But what we're trying to do is to get them where they, they should be. So, and I understand why you've, you've put it there, and it is an enhancement to the current schedule, but in terms of the, you know, putting forth the budget, it's, it's really, you know, not, not, it's not an enhancement.
Maybe correction.
Correction, yes.
That's the truth.
Number three, would that be nice to implement phase-one standard? Sure, it'd be nice, but I don't see that as a necessity, because we have lived without that up to this point.
No, well, mm, coming from people who have kids there, we're living with it, but should we have to? Like, you don't have to, we have to.
This is not a perfect, this is not, this is not a perfect world, and when my child graduated in two thousand and eleven, it wasn't a perfect world. But in, if we're looking at, you know, in terms of the dollars, I'm just saying where I'm coming from, and it sounds like I'm already outvoted, but.
No, you're good, go on.
But to me, that, that is not a necessity at this point. Pago, if we have major maintenance that needs to get done, it's gonna get done. One way or another, it's gonna come out of our budget, we're gonna go crying across the street, you know, ask for money. In fact, we probably should put that on the three-on-three agenda if it's not too late, you know, the, the whole maintenance and Pago. But I don't see that as, as a high priority to put in here, at least not, in my view, as high as the paras and the differentiated compensation. The differentiated school site allocation, I'm in favor of that, but I would like to look at what the title schools are already getting, because there are hundreds, probably millions, I don't have the total number, of dollars that are going to our title schools that the other schools don't have. So I would like to focus on schools that are not title schools, that don't have those extra resources. So that's where I am.
Okay, all right. Girls, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
Okay, um, so first off, what is Pago?
Great question. You keep showing these air surround.
No credit cards, we pay for maintenance when we need it.
Of course, savings account for emergencies.
But, but basically what the whole, whole concept is, so, we have a bunch of buildings, about three-quarters of a billion dollars worth of buildings. And so you should be saving about two-and-a-half percent of the value to replace those buildings every year to fix stuff when it breaks. So bid, buildings like this have air conditioning units. Granted, not as sophisticated as this guy right over here, um, but.
Very far past that.
But they, when they break, they're very expensive, more expensive than it would be to fix in a house, like, to the tune of like, maybe a million dollars to fix an air conditioning unit.
And generators and other things.
Or when a roof in a big building, yeah. So, so when some of those things break, it, it's a big dollar figure. Well, one of the things that we haven't been doing very well is we haven't been saving for that rainy day. And we should be budgeting somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen to twenty million dollars a year, just to cover stuff for when it breaks. And right now, you know, we don't. We have fifteen to twenty million dollars worth of things to fix every year, but we don't have the money to cover it, because it hasn't been built into our budget.
And that fifteen to twenty million dollars a year has been adding up for at least five years.
Well, aren't we, so we're between, what, seventy and a hundred million or something?
Yeah, and so one of the bad habits that we've gotten is that when we need to fix something, we actually take out a loan. And when you take out a loan, you're also paying.
Interest.
Interest.
Good.
We could, we do have a limit on that though.
So. We do.
Don't we, Chris? Don't we have some standard that says, if it's below a certain amount, we will not borrow, you know, funds, so it's not.
That's right. That's right, we have some controls.
Yeah, at least.
But.
But then we don't have the money for.
But.
For the items.
Yeah, but then we don't do those items.
Yeah.
So, you know, there, there's, there's some bad habits that we've developed. Um, and so one of the ways to fix that is to build up over time by adding money into an account that we would grow over time. So that's what it is.
Okay, and then also, you mentioned title schools, what exactly would that be?
So there, there are certain provisions in the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, which is a federal legislation, um, that classifies certain schools and student populations. Like, for example, Title III of that law deals with English language learners, students who take ESOL classes. Title I deals with students who are economically disadvantaged and provides some extra federal assistance for those schools. So what Mrs. Healy is talking about is schools that have a high percentage of those with economic needs receive additional money in it beyond what they would normally get, and it's part of, um, some federal funds that come to those schools.
Okay. And actually, Title I could be middle and high school, but we only do it at elementary school, because it comes.
With some rules.
It comes with some rules.
It does.
So, for example, um, to receive the federal funds, you have to meet certain performance benchmarks. And some of the high school performance benchmarks in particular are very difficult to achieve. In particular, um, students with disabilities performing at, uh, at above seventy-five percent of all benchmarks in all categories. So, for example, uh, the on-time graduation rate for students with disabilities is a little bit in conflict, because the law says that you can, you can be a student with disabilities and stay in school through your twenty-first birthday, but yet, this other part of the law under, under Title I says graduate in four years. So the two pieces of legislation are somewhat in conflict with, with one another, and, and in regard to that, what may be in best interest of the, of the child is that they receive education through their twenty-first birthday, but what's in best interest of the school in terms of receiving money would be hurry up and get them graduated. So there's some of that, that federal legislation that we're not a hundred percent comfortable with, because it doesn't necessarily align with the best interests of students. But at the elementary level, those things are not in conflict. The goals of Title I and the goals of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act that deals with students with disabilities, those things are in concert with one another. And so it, it, uh, it makes it really easy for us to say yes to the Title I provisions at elementary school.
So the differentiated school site allocations, it might make sense to just look at middle school and high school, since they don't receive title funds, but elementary school does. I'm just saying, that's one way to.
But half our elementary schools are Title I.
We actually do need to, to look at that, because that actually might not necessarily be legal.
Oh, that's no problem.
So, for what you do for.
Well, we don't.
Like, you can't, 'cause you can't supplant title funds.
Yeah, we don't go to trial.
You, you can supplement, but not supplant title funds. So if you're giving something.
Right, but we're certainly allowed to provide different per-student amounts, because we already do it.
Yes, but you may be treating.
We give more for middle school and more for high school. So we could say, we're gonna do this for middle school and high school, and not do it for elementary school yet.
Correct. Yes. Correct. Absolutely, you could one hundred percent do that, yes.
Okay.
But you, but you couldn't, you couldn't pick which elementary schools you wanted to.
Correct, I wasn't suggesting that we would.
Of course, we already do, because we identify the title schools. We have that power to identify which schools. Some, some years, I remember in the past, we only have less than a handful, and now we have, is it eight?
That's half.
How, half of, half of the, uh, elementary schools. And by the way, when do we relook at that? Is that every year? And when will that come back to the board?
It comes, uh, in a few months, this summer, 'cause you can't actually do it in advance, it comes out, we follow in the federal guidelines.
Okay, just trying to.
Okay. Okay, and then, how much wiggle room do we have in the budget? Like, in terms of like, God forbid, something bad were to happen to one of the schools, like, is there any, we have to pay out a loan?
We have insurance.
Okay.
There we go.
Good insurance.
Good insurance.
Really good insurance, but then we still have to find a home for whatever students who just left.
Every time somebody, something happens, I say, don't our insurance agent?
But, but, you know, if an HVAC system completely goes down in a school, we don't have insurance for that. And some of those systems are millions of dollars, so, so what would happen then?
Maybe. Maybe some of them just make them on the other side and warranty.
We take it.
Yeah.
Um, can I ask a question just on the, I mean, it's.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, I mean, it's, it's a, we've talked about this before, um, just in terms of like, if something happens at the school, like, and displaced students or whatever. But in reality, if there were a large mechanical failure or whatever at a school system that is not, I mean, I feel like we've been lucky so far with like, hey, the boiler went, but we fixed it, and, you know, the HVAC went, and we duct taped it, and everybody's cool again. But in reality, what, what happens at that point?
It just honestly depends on the school and the circumstances, because like, um, years ago, when my youngest was starting in elementary school, I don't know if you were there yet, Sarah, but, um, they had a gas leak, but we still needed to have school. So they got busted, they got taken to Dixon Smith, and Dixon Smith made room for Ferry Farm Elementary to go there for three days.
Oh.
So, yeah, 'cause my kindergartner was like, finally, I'm where I'm.
Square, square, round hole, and just across the county.
Because we've got plenty of room in our elementary school to do that.
Yeah, exactly, but there are, it just depends, like, when my mom opened Widewater, Widewater wasn't ready. So a church housed them until it was ready, you know, and.
Yeah, the Holy Catholic too.
So, yeah, exactly, and Dixon, so, I mean. Sorry, but that we, it just depends on the school, depends on the situation, and we come up with ways to.
That pays your advisory committee going, Dr. Taylor.
I think we should probably go next door.
I mean, some.
Teach school or something. County government building for a week and see what happens.
Yeah. But, you know, I mean, we could always take over.
Conway.
The three different churches, I mean, they've got plenty of rooms, right?
I have a pay-go question.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to know if you happen to know, what is the responsible amount for a budget our size? I asked you this last year too, and I don't remember what you told me.
Two.
For pay-go, but please give me the fiscally conservative responsible number so that.
It's gonna be a lot more than two million. Two million.
I know, I know, I want, but I wanted to know, so I wanted to know.
It's not even worth it.
I'll tell you exactly what it is. It should be two and a half percent of the value of your assets.
You told me that before, that's right, okay.
So and that's that's pretty much a standard for government issues, so that so, you know, that that's that's normal. For us, that's about twenty million dollars realistically. Depending if you go for the actual replacement value or the insurance value, you're looking at fifteen to twenty million dollars. Well, if you look at our three R plan, every year, it's like fifteen million, eighteen million. Like none of that's a surprise. I mean, like, it's kind of tracking with kind of like how it is.
Part B. So maybe Spotsy or Fairfax or, I don't know, these other other places near us, they're putting away at least ten million like in their budgets and getting those passed?
Uh, more like sixty million.
Okay.
I think I think Fairfax's pay-go is around a hundred million.
Yeah, that was, I shouldn't say Fairfax because they got like too much money. But people who are closer to us, they're putting, you know, millions, millions and getting that passed.
No, that's this is normal. It's weird that we don't do this.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
I feel like we need a big bake sale. Did we get our state?
Yeah.
Did we get, did the state figure out their?
So we're getting to revenue, which is a fun, exciting news that we have to share.
Oh.
Okay, so I just wanted to.
I'm sorry.
I just wanted. Did you have another question? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so these, this question is actually for you too. So when you're talking about phase one of the staffing standards, you're saying how that affected you guys as parents and students? Like, can you, like, how did that affect you and also like, I'm talking to you, phase, sorry?
Sorry, I was looking at the budget numbers and I was like totally in a.
It's phase one staffing standards, how?
For us, I I think we see it as like there's just not enough individuals in the classrooms. And so we know, especially for me, my kid, my oldest is a is a grown man and, you know, graduated college. So I've seen what they had. And then I see what my kid now, who just left, guy. It ain't the same. It's it's different. We need more people, right? So we were trying to update our staffing standards, and it might ebb and flow, it might go down in five years if our, you know, if we were to drop or whatever, I doubt it. But so that's what we're talking about, like there's just, there's so many, there's so many deficits inside the classrooms.
And so.
Or the schools.
And I've seen like a minor change to staffing standard, but we looked at our gifted resource teachers. Take a really small example. Six years ago, we had half a gifted resource teacher per elementary school to service every gifted child in elementary.
I don't think that's the number, but some schools had half, but it wasn't every school that had half.
Oh, that's right.
But you can, you can.
It was some schools went, that's right, some schools had half, some schools had a full. But even the ones that were full, like how do you plan if you know some schools have half and some schools have full? You really can't. So this board ultimately voted to staff so that every school had a full. And that just opened the door for so much more productivity for just that one small department. And I felt like if we could get everybody to the same kind of full staffing standards for whatever that looks like for that department, how much more we could do to so that that's happening? You know, there are schools that we don't have, we don't have classrooms, we don't have, you know, we don't have.
We don't have enough humans.
We certainly don't have enough humans, we have.
We don't have enough squares.
We've got vacancies.
Lots of vacancies.
They're funded, but we can't find them.
And then also, are we looking at counties, I'm gonna use Fairfax as as an example because I was a Fairfax kid. Are we looking at their budgets and what they're doing? Because Fairfax was a really good county, so we tried to learn from them and seeing.
That's his job.
So they're they're finding us differently when you're asking the right question. And so how do you apples-to-apples compare school systems? Well, there's there's one way that we do that, and it's how much do we send spend per student on average? Now, the advantage that Fairfax has being a very, very large school system with like two hundred thousand students.
And wealthy, very wealthy.
Yes, they actually, because they're so big, they have some efficiencies that they have because they're so big. So for example, whether you have one student or you have two hundred thousand students, you have one superintendent. Well, that's really expensive if you have one student in your school system, but that's not that expensive if you have two hundred thousand students. So there's economies of scale that come.
They have a lot more cabinet.
They they do, but but they are also a much larger school system too. So but but by scale, they spend several thousand dollars per student more than we do. Granted, they also have the tax base to support it, but but that's one of the things that we look at. Now, for us, we're probably a little bit more closely attuned to what's happening in Spotsylvania, who also spends several thousand dollars more per student than we do. And Prince William County, which also spends several thousand dollars more per student than we do.
Do we know where they are on that scale of a hundred and thirty-three?
Which one?
Spotsy and Prince William?
Uh, yep, Prince William is fifty-six, Spotsylvania is eighty-seven.
And we're one-twelve. So, you know, we're we're paying attention to it. So I gotta tell you, you, Maraki, you had great questions, so Catherine, no pressure.
They were splitting.
Are you ready, Dan?
Yeah, I'm done, I think I am.
So, yeah, I don't have any questions. I was just gonna kind of offer my two cents on the high priorities that we were talking about. My perspective and then also the student perspective because I know that's our job here. So I would suggest an emphasis on differentiated compensation. I know that's been a common theme here among many people, but as students, we have a unique perspective, unique insight to this issue. So as a student, and I'm sure Maraki, you've experienced something similar, but we've been crammed into classrooms with too many students. We've been unable to access resources, we've not been able to talk to teachers when we need to. And this is impeding our education in a way that has an effect on our test scores and our ability to learn. And so I know math has been an emphasis, so I would probably suggest the same thing. Math, because it's foundational knowledge, it builds upon itself. So that means it's not important only in the class that you're taking it, but it is important in elementary school, then middle school, then high school, then college.
Then higher sciences.
Then, exactly, then in the workplace. So I think that's important to take into consideration. So just on behalf of the students, I think I'd probably recommend an emphasis on differentiated compensation with a focus on math.
Thank you so much.
I never want to speak after her. That was so well stated.
Mr. and Mrs. Crosswell at Mountain View High School, they appreciate that.
So for me, I'm gonna also agree with the differentiated compensations. So I think that's pretty unanimous. I think there are, we're all in agreement with the exception of not the whole package, but more.
We don't even know if it's gonna work.
Yeah, and you could pare it down later too, so.
So I I would say that. And it seems like everyone is looking at the additional enhancements to the paraprofessional scale. Full implementation of phase one of the staffing standards, I do have a question about that. So if we, I see that you have the middle school five oh fours, the staggered high school counselor, and the high school deans of students. Are these, if if this is not done in phase one, is this part of the rollover into phase two automatically? Okay. Yeah, I don't care for that, but I just want to know if that is what we're considering. So we if we choose.
So then does that mean that in phase two, it's phase one and two for those? Or is that in phase two, it's phase one of that?
And so in year two, in year two, this phase one part would go?
Yeah, so so what it means is that what you had scheduled, bless you, for fiscal twenty-five plus these three items.
Okay, all right.
So all of phase two plus, that's what we did in the five-year plan.
But again, just like we're looking at the differentiated compensation, when we look at phase, when when we come back to this after we're told our dollars, when we come back to this, we can also say yes, no, yes.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we could think about that. I'm also gonna say, yes, we have to start with the pay-go. But I also would like to know where and how and when can we start the conversation about getting the extra tax increase that would help us with our, like I.
Yeah, for school construction.
The sales tax?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It has to be on the the referendum for the November election, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have to start that first action at the state.
Yep.
And then we'd have to go on.
Yep, so you've got a couple of steps in that process. So the the timing is actually good for that because that would dovetail into your legislative priorities for the following general assembly and then another referendum that would go to the citizens. And then it would be a penny that would go towards your sales tax if approved and ratified by both the general assembly and the citizens of Stafford, and it could go towards school construction and new construction. Now, the benefit for that is that it does free up other revenue in the general operating fund for the county from real estate taxes that that could be used to augment other elements in your budget.
Right, I'm sorry, did you say the one first, the one penny is only for new construction or?
It would be. Yeah, it would be for school construction.
So when?
Brand new constru-, I'm sorry, brand new construction or renovation?
It would be for new construction is what you could.
That's what I thought, that's why I was trying to confirm that. And so when, are we looking this November or are we looking next November?
You, well, you may have to do this in chapters, and that's not necessarily a bad thing either. And actually, depending on what legal says, is that you could even do a conditional referendum, although it would be complicated. You could do this in steps, but you would probably want a certain set of schools or construction projects to go to bond. And if I'm not mistaken, and don't quote me on this, but I think that this is correct, a new build of a school or a rebuild of a school that adds capacity does count as new construction. So, you know, you do have some flexibility there that.
We do have a lot of those on the.
Yes, that that actually.
Eighteen, nineteen.
You have some projects that that actually could count towards that. But you may be looking at a two-year process to get it all in place.
I just worry about it going away, like the opportunity going away. I mean, the number of opportunities that Stafford has missed to get revenues is.
So which comes first, the legislative part or the referendum part?
It really is.
You know, depending on how the referendum question is written, I believe you can do the referendum first.
I don't, I wanna be transparent and not sloppy about this.
But but you would typically go the legislative route. But but this would also be something that goes in the first year of a biennial budget, and that is what is coming up.
Coming up next year.
And so you've got a couple of things that you would want to lobby for heavily in your legislative agenda that are prime time for a biennial budget. The first is cost of compete adjustment, the second one would be a sales tax option for school construction. But those two items alone are are what a first year of the biennial budget kind of discussions, long session of the G A are all about.
So maybe maybe the Fab C could have a presentation with some kind of timeline. Because I keep hearing discussions about these things, but I don't hear any dates.
But, yeah, and I don't wanna, like you, I don't wanna lose that momentum.
And who who writes the referendum thing, who writes it?
So it would actually go from your county government that would have to put a question on the ballot. And so that that would be, that would be a request from the school board to request county government to put a a question on the ballot.
Is this been discussed with three hundred?
No. We put the, we talk about the living, but.
Yeah.
But perhaps we should just put this one, that this is something that we'd like to explore, and we were asking them for their support on it.
Maybe.
If we decide to move forward.
Can this go on to explore?
Add it with the poll.
Yeah.
I also ask just a stupid question about the pay-go.
To the agenda.
Sorry. So it's two million dollars a year for ten years, that's untouchable for ten years? Or do you dip into it as?
No, you're gonna be spending it every year, but since we build on our our base budget every year, what you would have is two million dollars of pay-go access in year one. In year two, you'd have four. In year three, you'd have six. In year five, you'd have eight.
Right, but you're not, but then.
Year four, you have eight, and then year two, ten.
But if you, but if you spend, does that?
No, you're gonna spend it because what you're doing is you're adding to the base budget every year.
In the pay-go.
So you'd have that same two million, it'd be kind of replenished for year two?
Oh, all right.
And then you add two more to it, so now you have four million.
Gotcha, gotcha.
And you're still not meeting your needs, my concerns.
I mean, to me, to put two million there is 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 not even a Band-Aid. It's not gonna meet our needs. So if you're if you're looking at needs, then look at the needs, not a placeholder. So that's, if if you say we need twenty million and we're putting two, that might not even put one chiller.
Well, but by the same, by the same argument, you can say, let's not do a salary crease crease this year because we can't get it up to Prince William. I mean, obviously, we just, we we gotta do what we can do.
But I'm not comparing, Prince William is different, that's a wish. The the maintenance is is a necessity. We're gonna have to do the maintenance no matter what. But if we're gonna build it in the budget, then let's be practical, you know, two million is gonna go like that. It's not gonna meet the needs, so it's just.
Is the point of pay-go, I can't remember, to use it every year?
Oh, you'd use it every year.
Yes.
But it would be a placeholder in the budget.
Years and years of projects.
I know, I just couldn't remember if it was like, are we saving it for, especially because we're trying to build it to twenty million, so it'll weigh every year.
For replacing it and then we ask for two more.
I think you can't build it if you don't ever put it in the budget.
I agree, but we are not building anything if we're spending it every year either.
True, true.
So like, I couldn't remember if we were trying to build it until we got to a certain point before we start spending some of it.
So Ms. Halsted is asking the same thing. So basically what you're doing is you're you're putting some of your major maintenance expense into your base budget. So let's say that you have a four hundred million dollar budget, and two million of your four hundred million is major maintenance expense. Next year, you ask for four hundred and two, four million of it is major maintenance expense. The year after, you ask for four oh six, six million of it is major maintenance expense. You're growing it over time by adding a little bit every year to a fund that you will use up every single year, every nickel. But you're you're couching on the future of what things will cost and.
And you're expect, you're managing expectations as well in terms of expenditures and what you anticipate coming across because these buildings aren't getting younger either.
No.
So to me, it's worth putting it out there. We've got to start it somewhere at this point in the game with where these buildings are. I just, I wasn't sure, so I need to clarify too.
But it's not gonna meet your expenditures.
No.
No, no.
Your expenditures are gonna be much higher.
Right.
To me, I I'd just like to be practical and look at what we estimate we're gonna need. If you if you wanna put it in as a pay-go, then put in what we say we're going to need next year.
Putting fifteen million.
Two million dollars. Well, but, you know, not just pulling a figure out or even a percentage, but what we know from our list we're gonna need.
Fifteen to eighteen million a year.
Well, but that's pulled out, that's just, that's a percentage.
But that's the way we've got it budgeted.
That is a percentage. I'd like to look at the projects, you could start by looking at the three R, you know, what what needs to be done now.
Are those unfunded projects up there?
I don't know.
So it's fifty million unfunded for the next five years. And for ten years, it's a hundred and thirty-one and a half million.
And that's barring no emergencies.
Correct, correct.
And I think that's where I get confused, is like if we're trying to build up this emergency fund, but then spending it on overdue projects, it's no longer an emergency fund, it's a maintenance fund.
Yeah.
So.
And it's and it's everything, it's your emergencies, it's also your preventive maintenance, it's, you know.
Sure. When we're caught up on our preventive maintenance, it becomes an emergency.
Ideally, something that has a twenty-five or thirty-year useful life, we're replacing it at twenty-five instead of at twenty-eight when it's already broken. And now we're scrambling, we're fixing, and we have emergency chillers and.
And that's my point too, is like it, I feel like it's the difference between a fix, which is a hundred thousand, and a broken thing, which is a million. Do you know what I mean? Like I, and even looking at this though, where it is, and Trish, I hear what you're saying, but to me, I mean, we couldn't even ask for the two, we can't even ask for the, you know what I mean, the two million. And again, most of us are sitting here taking stuff out of the budget, trying to figure out to slap twenty million on there or whatever, which is, or even if it's fifteen, that we actually need to fix our buildings. Like I I feel like I'd rather we focus on the staffing and the issues in the buildings and get that up, but but at least put in some expectation management for them, the two million. I mean, yes, we, it was at five, I think, at one point, wasn't it?
Last year, we were gonna do five and then we moved it down to, you took it off, then we put it up to two.
So, I mean, I also feel like it's part of us being fiscally responsible, not to go out there and be like, we get that we can't ask you for another fifteen million dollars just to fix these buildings.
But we have to.
But we have to, we do have to, but. But we have to, we do have to, but.
Cause you haven't been given us.
But I also think we gotta get the teachers in here to staff them more, you know what I mean? Like, it's, it feels untenable, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're on the same page because that wasn't on my list, because it's not gonna make it. I mean, it's not gonna do it in terms of meeting the needs and somehow we're gonna come up with the money if we have to do it.
But don't you, but don't you think, even if you're fiscally conservative, and I totally respect that, I don't think there's a darn thing wrong with it, but don't you think it's negligent to not address this in our budget that we know we're gonna have some issues? We know things are gonna break down. As a as a citizen, let's just say something happens next year, I can't think of it, like, that's crazy and we have to go next door, like, we need this money because this. And and everyone could agree, yep, they absolutely need it, I don't know.
Broke point's HVAC just broke.
But what I'm saying is, I'd be pissed off if it wasn't in the budget. I'd be pissed off at you for not building something in the budget. You should've built something in the budget.
And my response would be, if I'm gonna put it in the budget, then I'm gonna put what I need, not an arbitrary figure that is a starter place, that's all. Because you're right, but my point is, whether it's in the budget or not in the budget, it's gonna get taken care of. We will find it. Is it better to put it in the budget? I'm sure it is, but not just a figure that's just there to start out and it's two million and four, six, eight, ten. Even when you get to ten after five years, you're still, well, you're still. If you if you do two, four, six, eight, ten, in five years, it's gonna be fifty million. So you got ten million and your needs fifty, so, you know, it just.
You're right.
I I just like to address the problem and and not do a piece.
So you have it like as a budget item that says, our three R major maintenance budget line item is blank, whatever it is.
I I don't know, I mean, I I think this is something for Fab to look at, for maybe Citizens Advisory. How should this be funded? Should this be funded out of our operating funds? Maybe not, maybe not for this major maintenance that is in the millions of dollars, just like we have a debt service, uh, separate.
Yes.
A category, maybe we should have one for maintenance and maybe that's something we need to discuss. But otherwise, you know, we will take care of our buildings in one way or another.
People across the street have said to us, they would like five-year plans. They don't want us asking for everything all at once. And so our salary scale that we're working on is a five-year plan. And so I don't understand what's different about that and having a five-year plan on the three R Pago kind of stuff.
What's different is the five, the salary scale will get us where we need to be. This two, four, six, eight, ten million is not gonna get us near where we need to be because it's gonna be fifty million instead of ten million. That's the difference to me. I mean, it's just, it it, well, what makes a difference?
Okay, well, then let's make a decision.
No, I mean, you all can, you know, go ahead with the two million, but to me, it's not, it's that we need to need.
Put in and we may have to take out, but that's one thing that we are allowed to do, yes.
One, last year, we, you told us about Pago and you said, I'm not putting it in this year, but it's going in next year. It's next year. I feel like we have to put it in. Whatever number we decide to, I think it needs to go in because we said last year it would.
I agree.
Who said it would?
We, in his presentation next year, he said it was gonna be in this year's budget.
But he didn't put it in, did he?
I just, I'm just calling it on it.
It's, it's like kicking the can down the road. I mean, you, you know, you're, you're, you're paying a premium for stuff you shouldn't be paying a premium for.
At least I make you smile.
Second, five-year budgets are only as good as a five-year budget. Cause have you looked at across the street's budget? Do you know how much they have earmarked for us for this year? An increase of five million dollars.
Oh, bless their heart.
That's what they decided five years ago would probably be what we need is. So, like.
But, but.
Please, we have children here.
Okay, yeah.
Like, here's my thing though, we keep saying, I feel like this isn't about across the street. This is about the community and the actual receivers of the services, which are the parents and the students and whatever, like. And I get that, we have to go through there or whatever, but but it feels weird to me to say that we have to go across the street and get there. You know, like, they're the, and I get it, they technically are, but.
I don't care if we call it Pago or if we wanna call it a budget item. But to give, just so we can get, move on to the next thing. This three R list, is there a comparable number? Or is they, is there a, a particular way that we would like to go about this? Because we have a problem, it's our three R list. Funding is difficult for it, so how do we want it to go?
So, so let's say five million, because over five.
You would like to say five million Pago.
Pago, five million.
Sarah?
Anywhere from two to five million is fine with me. I have one last question. How do they fund their major maintenance across the street? Do they have a Pago for their buildings and grounds and all that stuff? Or do they just have?
They have a reserve fund.
They have cars. Well, I'm just trying to, like, I feel like our budget should mirror theirs and whatever system or language they're speaking over there for their major maintenance is going to be better received if we're speaking the same language.
I can, I can get you the exact number. I know that going years back, since I've been involved in the budget, the county's been asking us that you need to put money aside for your own Pago.
Okay.
Cause they've been, their goal has always been two percent of of their values, yeah. Or actually, two percent of their budget, they told, told the budget they wanted two percent.
Talking a foreign language, if they were debt servicing everything, maybe we are talking a foreign language, but.
And and even if they did debt service their major maintenance, I I still wouldn't advise it because you're.
No, I wouldn't either, but.
It's not responsible to taxpayer, cause you're paying a premium that you shouldn't be paying.
Well, if we did two percent of our budget, that would be what, eight million dollars?
It would not be enough.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, if we're looking for a number.
Well, two point five is nineteen point five.
Okay.
Whatever their recommendation is.
My, what'd you say again, I'm sorry.
I was saying, my vote would be for five million, but also agreeing that this year we will tackle how we'll address that in the future. With either Fab or citizens and like, you know, willing to.
What are your thoughts?
I I mean, I'm, I'm, I would like to go with five, just knowing at least we could maybe reprioritize some of our top three
Okay.
or top four three R projects.
Okay.
With that money.
Sure.
I I would be more comfortable with five than I am with two because I think two is just a throwaway. But I would also like to explore with the supervisors, a way to fund this major maintenance. And maybe we need a separate category because it seems unfair that we have to take this out of operating funds, which we look at as per pupil and what we're spending for, you know, the the kids and the teachers and the staff. And we need that to replace the roof or the HVAC or the chiller. So that's something I think we should explore, and not necessarily for borrowing it, but for a separate source of funding.
Okay, all right, so do you have your?
We got it.
Okay, let's move it on.
All right, to revenue, talk about the good stuff.
Oh, wait, where are we?
Nothing so as fun like revenue.
So, have some not official updates. House and Senate have both made some recommendations, but the General Assembly has not finalized the budget. There's not a finalized state budget. Hopefully, by this time next week, when you guys vote, we'll have more information on on what's coming from the state. But wanted to at least give you the updates on what came out of the House and what came out of the Senate. So over what we have included in this superintendent's budget right now, the House is proposing an additional three point four million. Now, most of that is tied up and they went from a five percent minimum increase to a seven percent. Not minimum increase, I'm sorry, it's basically an average increase from five to a seven. That was in the governor's budget. Yep, and so technically, we are already meeting that. The Senate also has that. Neither one is putting funds in there for the media and childcare, so they're not correcting that. However, the Senate is.
For next year's budget.
For next year's budget, yeah.
They're holding us harmless for this year.
They're holding us harmless for this year's budget, it's just.
We haven't passed this.
It appears, yeah.
It appears that way.
So when they adopt, the changes to twenty-four, they'll also adopt the amendments to twenty-three. So right now, the House and Senate were both looking at holding us harmless, but we'll see.
But the, but the discrepancy is still there, right?
For next year.
So the, it it is an actual error in how the Virginia Department of Education represented the the dollar figures to us and the grocery tax relief.
Okay.
So the grocery tax relief definitely took effect, no one discounts that. But how the Virginia Department of Education reported that to school divisions, it's as though they did not have that relief, so they were counting on revenue that did not actually exist. Now, the good news is that the Commonwealth has been growing and there is robust revenues that should account for that. And they're looking at holding everybody harmless for this current year, cause we're three quarters of the way through this year. And but for next year, they're gonna say, no. You you, the grocery tax relief is law, you have to deal with out that revenue, but we have all these other things that we're accounting for because of high, higher than expected revenue projections that.
So that should cover the deficit.
It would make up a little bit of difference, yes.
At least in a large division.
Yeah, in a large division like ours.
Eliminating the support cap would be nice.
Yes.
Yeah, that's where a large chunk of that fourteen point eight million dollar increase is coming from, from the Senate.
The support cap, can you explain to me?
Certainly, so in in two thousand eight, the housing market collapsed.
Yeah.
And so the the state government did a couple of things that we are still kinda paying for now. One is the state pays for a portion of positions in every school system. They don't pay for all the positions, they only pay for a portion of them.
What portion?
It really kinda depends. So they have, they have state ratios for classrooms, like thirty-five to one, they think is an okay class, I was in Virginia. So they only pay for teachers thirty-five to one at the high school level, it's not a joke.
Sixty-six percent.
It is, and they only pay sixty-five percent of that. So they pay a portion of a portion.
Okay.
Well, what they also did to limit their exposure a little bit and to limit the amount that they gave to the school systems in fiscal oh nine to deal with that that big budget shortfall and that collapse in the market, is they limited the number of support positions that they would finance per their standards. So they they would, they financed a much larger number of those positions, like clerical positions, additional mental health supports and a and a whole host of other types of positions that they they were a lot more supportive of financially. And so that has been called the support position cap. Another thing that they did is they used the state's retirement system to balance the state budget. And so what they have been doing for, I know, for like the last fifteen years is how try to get the state retirement system back in the, in in balance in a positive number. Now, good news it is, but they had to make some significant reductions to the benefits that they offer employees who retire from the state system as a, as a consequence of that. And so the two really longstanding issues from two thousand eight that we're still living with are the changes in the retirement system and then the support cap. And so the Senate is proposing that they eliminate that support cap and to the benefit of us is about eleven million dollars.
Which was one of our.
It was one of our legislative priorities.
But realistically.
I mean, eleven million.
What do you think is gonna happen with this?
I I think you're gonna land closer to the House. Cause you you've got two, two pieces of the government that are, that are operating in sync. The the governor's office and the House are definitely more aligned. But I think that the conferees and crossover are gonna get better than the House, but not nearly as good as the Senate is where I think we're gonna land. Whereas in other years, we would've been closer to the Senate and not as close to the House.
Okay, so when are we gonna know?
Well, the GA should should gavel out here in the next week. So in in all likelihood, we may actually have realistically close to final numbers by the time the board votes.
Okay, so is this gonna impact our budget? Because what comes in will be applied.
Wait, don't go to the next one yet, cause I want you to talk about the notes at the bottom.
We may need to make adjustments next week, once we know what's on here.
We're gonna need to make adjustments anyway.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, before we, yeah.
Approve, approve, yeah.
The budget, we approve it and then we adopt it, once we know how much we're getting.
So your your budget, it is going to be. Yeah, sure. Yeah, just just really quick, you're you're gonna have more revenue in the state line than what you originally had thought, but the question is how much? And so what do you do with the additional revenue? Well, you, you got a couple of options. I I I think no matter what, your budget process is gonna carry through all the way to April because you've got to see how Prince William reacts. You've got to see how the state reacts and you've got to see how county government reacts. So I think figuring out based on how those three entities react, you may want to look at maybe even making an adjustment to your license scale and your service scale more in line with whatever Prince William does. And I'll give you an example, Prince William is at a flat five percent. But if they adjust to a flat seven to take advantage of the state incentive, we may be back to the drawing board and discussing different options.
But you have these two notes though, about a retention bonus and a recruitment bonus, obviously not all funded.
So so those are on the table and those are things being discussed by the budget conferees. So they, these are things that are up for debate. They could be added to the final version of the budget, they could be added by the governor's office. But this is all a part of the discussion. I wouldn't get too excited about the small recruitment bonus because that's ten million dollars spread across the entire state.
Right.
So, that's like thirty-four cents per teacher.
Those retention bonuses are tough because they only cover SOQ, so then we have to come up with the money.
Yes.
Which then we might be having to come up with that money by taking it out of what we'd rather do, which is a salary increase.
Yeah, we'd have to pony up half. And it's not credible comp, so it doesn't count towards VRS, it's not, it's not a great deal.
Yeah.
It is for the people getting it.
Yeah, the other, the other things.
Politicians getting the goodwill.
They give the credit, so they don't have to come up with the funds.
The the other things that you could do is you could take the difference, pocket the difference and use it to offset your local request. You could add back in high priority discretionary items that you just talked about. And our tally is thirteen million, based on what you all said, which we'll come back to you and show you next Tuesday and send a draft in the Friday Bulletin for you all to review and brainstorm. But but effectively, those, that's, those are the, that's the menu of options for the board to consider.
So we're asking for twenty-nine million. Sixteen and.
Actually, thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Oh, thirty-six.
Which ironically is proportional to spots of aim in the county.
It is proportional, that's what I was thinking, it's, you know, cause I was thinking.
We're not asking for anything until we vote on it.
Right, that's true.
So we need to make sure that we're explicitly clear that this is a school board budget for process of conversations and not a superintendent budget. Because last year, we had a fully funded superintendent budget, not fully funded school board budget, just so that we're clear before we go forward.
So Dr. Taylor, in your recommendations there, are you saying that, for example, if Prince William were to go to seven percent, we might want to think about shifting some of that thirteen million that we're talking about to adjust the scale a little bit higher in order to stay, try to to keep ourselves moving in that direction? Is that what you were sort of?
I I think the answer is maybe, and and here's why it's a maybe. I think it largely depends on a couple of things. This is the downside to having a revenue sharing agreement. Because Prince William, if they were to take advantage of that, they absolutely would have to cut something from their current budget to do it. Because right now, they've already made a commitment based on their revenue sharing agreement as to the things that they're adding into their budget or not. They know exactly how much they're gonna get, they're working within that that frame. So if it, if they get any additional state revenue and it's an incentive, cause that's what this is, it's an incentive. And they match that incentive, they have to reduce in another area to match that incentive, so they may not take that deal. Now, I find that hard to believe that they would.
Then we need to think about that.
Then we need to think about it. But I would also say too, it largely depends on how much additional revenue you get from the state to see if that's even practical. Because right now, you meet the incentive across the board, which is like awesome that we're there. It doesn't get us any closer to where we wanna be, but we also don't have to make tough choices to get the incentive like Prince William would have to do. So there's a little bit of chess that I think needs to happen after we start to see how these things maneuver once the the General Assembly gavels out and then people then have to start making some decisions on the local level. So I think unfortunately, this isn't done until really the end of April when when this board comes back to the table and you're you're making some reconciliation with your budget on what you have that's available based on how the state and your local government behave, but also how your surrounding localities behave.
Right, thank you.
Okay, is there any other question? Okay, is there any other questions or directions that we would like to give Dr. Taylor before he brings it back to us on our Friday memo and then our Tuesday meeting?
No. No, I, it was.
I was waiting for it, come on.
I don't know, it was, it's been bubbling, but no, I, I wanna see what comes out in the Friday and then.
Okay, okay.
And then process that.
Okay, that's, that's fine, anybody else, anything else?
No.
No, is it movement to adjourn or?
There's no movement, it's just over.
Okay. I brought a pink paper up to.
Oh, 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 thank you.
Sometimes it just leaves.
That's awesome.